You'll take your seats. It's now 10 o'clock, we'll start this meeting. Madam Clerk, please do the roll call.
Mr. Trainee.
Here.
Ms. Gray Jackson.
Aye, to be here.
Ms. Timbowski.
She wasn't here.
Oh, okay. Um, Mr. Evans. Mr. Flynn. Mr. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Horniman. Mr. Jo- Ms. Johnston. Mr. Peterson. Mr. Starr. Mr. Steele.
I'm here.
Ms. Timbowski.
Present.
Good.
Mr. Perez, ready?
Here.
Ms. Plunkett?
Here.
Mrs. Goff, to Eastwood?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Croft?
Here.
Mr. Higgins?
Here.
Ms. Spelling?
Here.
Thank you.
Please note that Mr. Peterson joined and the Assembly has a form.
Thank you. Next is a Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Gray Jackson, since you were recently in DC, would you please...
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Elby.
Welcome, Mr. Chairman.
To our Minister of Previous Meeting of June 5th, we get a motion on approval of the previous minutes. Appreciate it. Is there a second? Ask unanimous consent. See no objection, those minutes are approved. We're now down to approval of the agenda before we get there. I want to turn some time over to the mayor. I was told you wanted to talk.
Just very briefly, Mr. Chair, thank you very much, and it's a pleasure to sit in front of my first joint appearance here, and hopefully I'll equip myself well. You know, I'm looking forward to the action items on this agenda, what we can do to find shared services and savings and efficiencies between the municipality and the school district. I think there's a great deal of potential. The city manager's already hard at work on that, and I know that his counterpart over at the school board is engaged as well, and so I'm looking forward to that. Personally, as a parent of someone who's in high school, I'm looking forward to some of the other items on the agenda about moving the high school times back. But what I really wanted to address you all about was the decision that the governor recently made to retroactively withdraw support for bond debt reimbursement. And, you know, my time in the legislature, I fought hard against retroactivity provisions. Retroactivity provisions are unfair, just fundamentally unfair. And I know that there's a lot of discussion when we talked about all taxes and all revenues. The problem with retroactivity is it punishes people and companies and individuals for decisions that have already been made. That's a wrong thing. And just as the oil industry demanded some kind of stability and certainty with the economic environment they're operating in, I think Anchorage taxpayers deserve the same level of consideration. It is unfair for people to go to a ballot and vote on a bond with the expectation that they're going to receive debt reimbursement and for the governor to retroactively pull it away. To do it in a way where the legislature has not expressly suggested that he do so strikes me as compounding the problem. So, um, we- I'm putting together a letter to the governor today. We're going to make it clear that the municipality's position is that bond debt reimbursement ought to be reinstated. We have to do it because there is no provision under law that gives him the authority to pull it back, and I think that also that the people of Anchorage, the students of Anchorage deserve the fiscal, the same fiscal certainty that we provide to our industries here. So, that's the position I've taken. I hope that I can count on the support of the Assembly and municipality. It's just a fundamental question of fairness, whether or not you supported the bonds. It's- and regardless of how the state decides it's going to address its fiscal situation, to do something retroactive- retroactively is not a sound course to take.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we were actually citizens voting when this was going on. Had they told us before we had our constituents go to the poll, they would have voted on knowing what was going to happen. But in this case, they did it after the fact, and that's reprehensible as far as I am concerned.
And it's- and there's actual financial repercussions to the taxpayers. I mean, the difference of $5 per $100,000 taxable, um, taxable property is- has some significance. But to me, it's the...
It's the message it sends.
It's the message it sends. And I understand the state has its fiscal difficulties, and we'll do everything we can to help them resolve that. But we've got to do things prospectively, not retrospectively. We've got to do things looking forward, not punishing people for decisions that have been made, and it's a fundamental fairness question.
Questions from people?
I'm just like...
Yes, Ed.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to thank Mayor Burkowitz for his comments on that. Yesterday, I submitted a letter back to the Department of Education asking for reconsideration regarding Commissioner Hamley as a matter of protocol, but I have expressed, you know, we have a different position perhaps than what was stated through the recent letter that we received, and so we're following up with Commissioner Hamley and applauding more conversations, I think, perhaps.
Superintendent, can I ask you, did they had- they told us ahead of time that they was going to participate? A Department of Education told us before we went to the ballot that they were going to participate in this?
No, there was no indication from anyone when we put our bond forward that there would be a consideration or a difference of what has been happening for the last several decades of state reimbursements, a program that's been placed that has supported voters and taxpayers and communities for many, many years. And the difference is, I think, there's always the discussion available to the legislature as to what that appropriation looks like, and we certainly, you know, have the authority to make those changes in legislation. But in this case, I think the retroactivity date was something that was unexpected and certainly created a lot of confusion, you know. And even when it went to that date, there was a discussion that it was requiring a supermajority, and when that didn't get met, it raised up more issues about the validity of the retroactivity, so...
Yes, Mayor.
And I just want to reiterate, that retroactive provision failed in the legislature.
I agree.
And when it fails in the legislature, that's an express statement of legislative will that the retroactive provision shouldn't apply, and that ought to have received consideration.
Yes, so we submitted a letter to Commissioner Hamley outlining some of those key points, and certainly I think that a copy is available to the mayor.
Thank you. Senator, do you have a comment? I know. You, ma'am? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm losing my voice, which some may appreciate, but, um...
So how much do we have to pay to keep this going on? I'll bring you lozenges.
Thank you. Um, so I'm a little confused because I recognize, maybe I'm a little more wonky than others, so I watched many of the legislative hearings and some of the Senate Finance Committee and many of the discussions, and even at our own Municipal Budget Advisory Commission meetings, I know there was robust discussion about the fact that even before the election, that it was a real understanding that this may not be reimbursed this year. And so, when I'm hearing everybody say we didn't have an idea, I don't know why, because it was robustly discussed. And now, I recognize the retroactive clause failed, I watched that session too, but, you know, when a lot of the people that I spoke to voted, they recognized that the reality was there's a real good chance it may not get reimbursed. So, I think there's, I just want to be on the record of saying, you know, I voted with a full understanding and knowledge that it may not be reimbursed. And I know our own Budget Advisory Commission with the municipality had those discussions prior to the election. So, I think for us to put out a message that we had no clue or idea that this was going to happen, I think is probably not 100% accurate.
Well, if I could... Mayor and then Superintendent and Kathleen.
The fact that they're having a discussion in June about various subjects doesn't mean that it carries the force of law. And the theory of the retroactivity clause to pass by itself says that it doesn't have the force of law. The second thing to consider is the importance of sending a message, of conveying a message of fiscal certainty and fiscal stability. And until there's something that has the force of law, you have to wonder what the repercussions are for the state being able to honor any of its commitments. And to me, this is, again, it's a question of fairness, and it's a question of the state living up to its obligations, as they exist under law at the time that the provisions were passed.
Sure. I appreciate those comments, and I'm not making any judgments, I'm just saying, to me, I wasn't surprised when they- when this decision came down.
Okay, I got you on that.
And it's one of those things, I think certainty is an important thing, and I appreciate those comments.
Superintendent?
I appreciate Ms. Timbowski raising that up, and I would like to just make sure I'm not miscommunicating. I think there was a lot of confusion and conversation during the legislative session about what was going to happen with the debt reimbursement. Things led to speculation and uncertainty for voters. What we did as the district, and what we do with every one of our bond, is clearly state that debt reimbursement is something that is made available, this is what the impact would be to taxpayers, or the benefit would be to taxpayers, and what it is if it's not available. With that, I think the confusion came in with the actual retroactivity date. That's where it was, I guess, uncertain, and that's where I think people might have, I might have been surprised by that whole thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Ms. Plunkett?
He covered what I was going to talk to, which was the uncertainty, but I certainly, like Amy, I voted knowing that there's always a chance and a possibility with any reimbursement.
With school bonds, every year, we take them to voters, understanding that if the state doesn't give us the funding, then we place the full faith and credit of municipality to pay them. Just unfortunate, it happened this year.
Mr. Hall?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The AML formed a Sustainable Budget Committee this year that I either had the good fortune or the misfortune of chairing. It had a great meeting with Senator Myers and Senator McKinnon earlier this week discussing this, and I think it's imperative that we stand up and take a strong, a very strong stand on this with the understanding that that did not pass the legislature. And because if we don't, we're going to continue to get hammered, and that was the conversation I had with them. It's important for us, for the government, for the state to get a sustainable budget because we, as local communities, it's going to be impossible for us to just arbitrarily every year wait until they get through with their legislative session to find out what they're not going to be covering next year. And quite frankly, I think if we don't make a big issue out of this, as was mentioned earlier, in every bond that we pass, they put that little clause in there, depending availability of funds. So, what happens if next year, they not only don't reimburse us for this bond, but decide that maybe...
Past years.
Past years, that we don't have the money, so you just deal with it. The fact that, I think, they are not creating a long-range sustainable budget is absolutely critical for us because we can't build local municipal budgets until we know what they are going to step up and accept responsibility for. We're just in a really tough place, and all of the communities throughout the state are coming together to take a pretty strong position on this. We have got to have things that we can absolutely rely on in the future because there are small communities out there right now that, you know, those guys are toast.
There's a lot of Pelicans out there, aren't there? Mayor, it happened to Pelican?
It's scary. It's scary. There's communities out there right now that quite honestly can't pay their employees.
Ms. Gray Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to thank my colleague, Ms. Timbowski, for her comments. I really appreciate hearing them, and I also attended the Budget Advisory Commission meetings. Um, you know, but every year, we know, the fine print is that there's a possibility we won't get reimbursement. That's been forever, as long as I've been around, at least. But I think that some of us, maybe, I'll call it wishful thinking, and I'll speak for myself, I really believed, as usual, there was a possibility, but I had, I just didn't think in a million years, honestly, that it would affect this year's bond package. I just didn't think that would happen. And so, with that said, I really want to thank the mayor for his efforts moving forward. I support him 100%, and let's do what we need to do to at least, at the very least, get reimbursement this year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Timbowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent, so I have a couple of questions when it comes to bond debt reimbursement. If we're looking at worst-case scenario, building on, you know, what Mr. Hall said, considering our outstanding debt, what the state has historically matched and paid for that debt, if they decide all-in not to pay moving forward, what is the liability we're looking at? The amount that is, has been covered by the state will now have to be covered by the municipality and the taxpayers.
Of the current bond that was passed in April?
No, in totality.
She's referring to past bonds that we...
Yeah, because if we're saying, if this retroactivity, activity remains, if I'm building on what Mayor Burkowitz is saying, and they apply it to other bonds...
Oh, I would have to, I would have to look into that number, I don't know.
I'm sure it would be massive, but...
Yes, you're saying if they took what was already voted on, approved, and then legislated, and they said, "We're no longer, we're unwinding that"?
Because you can bind future legislatures.
Right.
If I could, Mr. Chair.
I'll go to you, Mayor, and then I'm going to get to...
So, I know in this state, we have a lot of talk about federal overreach. I mean, what you're talking about is a question of what I call state underreach. If the state, if the state were not to do...
Can we coin that?
You can, you can use that again.
Thank you.
If the state were not to do what it has done in the past and has created a certain amount of reliance amongst the people of the state of Alaska, a debt, that the reliance to our detriment, that to me is a fundamental breach of the contract between local governments and the state. And we would take appropriate action to make sure that the state lived up to its obligations, whether or not there was a little bit of fine print in the notion that all of this is subject to appropriation. When the state does something that creates an expectation that they're going to continue to behave in a certain way and then backs away from that performance, they should be held viable.
Um, so I'd like to follow up.
Ms. Timbowski?
This is going to be interesting, having a lawyer as mayor, so...
Yes.
Because it's very thoughtful discussion, and I appreciate it. But what I'm, what I, what I need to know is, I need to know, what is the liability for the citizens of Anchorage if, in fact, bond debt reimbursement moving forward is essentially not fine?
We're going to have to figure that out. No one has it right now.
Um, you know, of course, it's huge, but, you know, what does it mean to somebody's house payment, is what I'm thinking, you know. And that's why I think when Mayor Burkowitz is speaking of stability, I think it's an interesting conversation, and I think it's an important one because I think we do need stability. But I just want to know what we're facing if, and I can't imagine that they would wipe out the entire program, they might phase it or something, but I think that's something that we need to start talking about. We can't put our heads in the sand and pretend it's not a liability out there, because it obviously is. So, can I get that number?
Yeah, we can, we can work on...
That would be helpful, and, like I said, it's just for my own, think about it and see and make sure, and this is the thing I think might be helpful with legislators from each district, is to say, "Listen, you know, this is what it's going to mean to your local constituents in a house payment if this happens." And I think that might be another avenue to the conversation that might be effective. I guess is where I'm going.
Just a minute, you're taking 18 so far.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a clarifying question?
I'm sorry, what, sir?
Ask a clarifying.
Yes, sir.
I'm just trying to understand, if you want to understand what it would be if we went backwards, or you're asking about what the impact it will be moving forward?
I'm not asking about going backwards. What I'm saying is, we have a bunch of bonds that are out there right now that all have the language on it saying it was subject to the state's appropriation each year.
Right.
The fact of the matter is, that's considered a liability in accounting terms. So, moving forward, if in fact that appropriation isn't made, what does it mean to the taxpayers in Anchorage?
Sixty million a year.
Thank you.
I asked the CFO and the...
Okay, we need to...
We're paying about ninety...
I've still got people. Mr. Croft, I need to finish him. Tim, you're next.
It's a question of can we trust the state? If they make a commitment, they've got to live up to it, and they've got the resources to do it, they've got the taxing power, et cetera. We have to be able to rely upon the raw law. The legislature did not pass it, the governor on his own said he's, he's not going to pay for bond issues passed January 1st or whatever passed after that. To my understanding, the state has never reneged on that deal.
They have this year.
Well, they may this year, we're not...
I know, but you said they never have, they have this year.
Well, they haven't yet. But, um, and the whole system of educational funding statewide is the state's responsibility. And if you can't educate because you've got to pay bonds, if you don't have the money for the classroom, there's a lot of schools that are going to close statewide, districts of the whole. So, it's a huge issue that has to be resolved, and I think we need to challenge it.
Tim?
Yes, if I may make a suggestion, Mr. Mayor, when you approach this issue, part of the arguments that were put forth by legislators for the retroactivity to January 1st was fairness to other districts who didn't just happen to have bonds on the ballot this year, and that therefore they had to be fair to everybody in stopping this, the reimbursement. I would contend that therefore that puts Anchorage School District, and I believe there were two other districts, in a six-year no-bond cycle as opposed to the five years that others. And if we start talking about the retroactivity going further back in time, we're going to have other districts too that will be greatly impacted. For instance, in Matt Sue, where they passed just recently a $200 million bond. If ours is 60 million, theirs is going to be even more dramatic, and I think then you'll start to see a major impact, not just in our community, but statewide in terms of the state reneging on their original promises. So, it would be, it will be an interesting question.
Any other comments from people here before we get, go on? I want to recognize the fact that Mr. Flynn's joined us, Mr. Croft has joined us, Ms. Johnston's joined us, and Mr. Higgins has joined us since we got started. Anybody else I didn't mention? Yes, Ms. Johnston?
Could I take a point of personal privilege since...
Absolutely, ma'am.
I was riding like...
You're bicycling in?
I bicycled in, and it was slippery, so I, I was...
Do you have snow?
I don't know.
Okay.
But, um, have you gotten to the agenda as far as approval of the agenda?
No, that's our next thing.
So I can, I can make my addition there?
Yes, you can, ma'am.
Thanks.
Next item is approval of the agenda. If I get a motion on the approval of the agenda?
We have to approve. Second.
Is there anything that people want to add to it? Ms. Johnston?
Um, I apologize for not putting this in earlier, but last year, we discussed the free lunches, the federal program in each of the schools, and we were promised to revisit it this year, and this is the time to revisit that.
Okay. Free lunches?
Are free meals. Right.
Is there anything else we need to add to the agenda? Is there objection approval of the agenda? Seeing none, it's approved, we're going to go through it. The first one is updated on status of State of Alaska versus Ketchikan Gateway Borough. Superintendent, so where are we? Here the Supreme, it's for the Supreme Court now?
It's actually being heard. It started this week, I think Wednesday, and the law arguments were at 1:30 on Wednesday, and the decision is supposed to take, I think, up to six months possibly, maybe happen sooner. Now, the issues, there are three central issues in the case that pertain to clauses in the State of Alaska Constitution. One is the dedicated funds, the other is appropriations, and the third is the governor's veto. So, those are the areas they're going to be addressing. The impact to the decision, if Ketchikan's Superior Court opinion is affirmed, about twenty, I think 235 million dollars would drop out of the formula funding for this school year. So, it's a significant amount of money we're talking about, and in that, some of the regional education attendance areas will lose about a 25% reduction in their funding. So, in that, the legislature could decide that there has to be a statewide, schools statewide should be funded via a statewide property tax is one idea or concept, and in that, the state could levy and collect tax directly from property owners. For the Anchorage School District, I think if we are told that they can't require a local municipal contribution, what we would end up being faced with is a voluntary contribution. And I think we've had great support from the municipality and from constituents in Anchorage here for many, many years, but the idea of a local contribution is one that has implications beyond just what the appetite is for a voluntary purpose. It goes into the federal part of it, because we currently receive funds from the federal government, and in that allocation, it's dependent on equal equity through the state of Alaska, so if we have a reduced rate locally, then we could possibly lose additional federal funds on top of it. So, there are layers of implications, not only to what that sustainability or that consistency would be for local contributions to our district, but then the implications through the federal funds that we also receive. So, we're watching it very carefully. We have concerns with it. I think the discussions that we've had before have been around, you know, what that potential impact looks like to not only our district, but other districts across the state, and we're still waiting to see how things are going to proceed.
Mr. Folsy? You been watching this case, sir?
I have, Mr. Chair. I should identify for the record that in my private life before joining the municipality, I actually offered, authored one of the briefs in the case on behalf of the Association of School Boards and Council of School Administrators and Superintendent's Association.
Is there anything you can tell us that would help us in the discussion?
Superintendent Graff's summary, the bottom line is that it's now out of our hands and it's in the hands of the four justices who prefer the case. I think my own spin on what would happen if Ketchikan Gateway Borough were to prevail is slightly changing, that I'm not sure anyone can yet predict with certainty what would happen, and that the smart money might just be that the legislature, having seen that the formula funding had been blown up, would feel the desire to take it back and return to the drawing board and come up with something new, and what that would look like is any of those cases.
Superintendent, you were talking about the state, they used to have a state school tax here that was based on the first check you received in January, and it's a shame we got rid of it, and maybe we should have just suspended it for a while, but that was a vehicle that would bring money into the state.
I think it would most certainly bring money in, I don't know if it would come near the 235 million dollars.
No, but it's a way to start.
Yeah, I think there are a lot of conversations starters.
Mr. Flynn first, sir?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The whole thing. First, just doing a little bit of research on this subject and found a fascinating case study from Ms. Gray Jackson's home, state of New Jersey.
From New Jersey.
Bodies laying everywhere.
Where the court there found that the school funding system was insufficient and basically forced the legislative branch to come up with a solution, and their ultimate solution was, you know, to tax to, to address funding needs for school districts. I think it would be, with all due respect to Mr. Folsy, inappropriate for us to sit back and wait to see what the court notes. I think we, as the largest entity with one team in the state, need to think about, okay, if the court finds in favor of the Ketchikan Gateway Borough, then what is the next step? Because I do not live under the illusion that all of a sudden the state will now fill that gap. So, what is the answer? And this has to be, you know, an AASB, you know, lots of Association of School Boards discussion. How do we create a voluntary contribution system that meets the needs of the educational community throughout the state that accompanies the state dollars that are allocated? Does that mean that the state's student allocation gets altered in some way? Maybe, maybe not, probably, frankly. But we should be crafting an answer to that question before it gets asked, because if we wait for the legislature to try and solve it, we will not like the ultimate answer. And so, I think there should be two members of the Assembly, two members of the school board, at least one member of the municipal finance department... board, at least one member of the municipal finance department, at least one member of the school district's finance department, working out a solution that we think makes sense on a statewide basis and advancing that through AASB so we have that ready in place, no later than December. So that if the answer comes back that yes, Ketchikan Gateway Borough is supposed to correct in their assessment legally, then we have a solution that we can hand to the legislature that works hopefully statewide.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Mr. Hall, I'll get to you, Superintendent. Mr. Hall?
Well, I can play off of what Mr. Flynn said pretty quickly, because in the discussion with the Senate Finance Chair and the President of the Senate, we specifically addressed that. Because the entire conversation that my committee is having in every legislative session is not what are they going to do for us, it's what are they going to do to us this year. And everybody's been focused on the revenue share, and the reality this year is what they did to us, the revenue share doesn't even come close to covering the cost. Plus the fact that every community is already using that money. They can't take it to pay for something that's not being funded in the future. But Mr. Flynn's right, depending on how this question comes down. If it comes down in favor of the Ketchikan Borough, they're very clear. We've got X dollars, 1. whatever billion a year, and we'll just have to divide that however it gets divided if we step up. So whatever it is, Mr. Flynn, it's going to require us as a community to step in and ensure that we've got a plan in place to cover that funding. But also, everybody's got to understand that as the state deals with these fiscal issues that are coming at them and look at new revenue, we're going to pay that revenue. We're going to pay it on top of what we're already paying for our local government. And quite honestly, you know, that's part of where this committee is advocating. We need some ideas of where you people are planning on going, because we've got to make plans locally to be able to do it. Because we know that we, quite honestly, South Central is going to pick up the bulk of whoever, because, you know, we're the population and the finance of the State of Alaska. So I couldn't agree more. I think it would be imperative to put together a group of people to start doing the what-ifs and developing a plan to be ready to deal with it, because it's coming.
Tam?
You know, the Ketchikan case is saying that the state can't dictate how much you have to put in. We've been dealing for years with the other side of the coin, federal legislation that says you can't, that they don't want disparity between rich and poor districts.
There's reason the state kept.
Whatever it is, whatever the state does, we've got a tax base, at least. There's communities around this state that don't have a tax base. And so I'm hoping that in the conversations at the legislature and the state level, that they think about that. Yeah, it would be bad for us, but boy, it'd be a lot worse for other outlying communities. So I'm sure there will be a full and complete carrying of the whole issue, and we just need to be prepared to change.
Superintendent?
I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Flynn's idea of planning for potential outcomes here. And I don't want us to-- I want to make sure we also held new sight of the state constitutional requirements in that discussion, but we're planning for, you know, what could come. I think there's a point in the case to be made about the obligation of the state in the Constitution.
Create new tech.
So balancing with that is important. And Mr. Steele's comments about rural Alaska, you know, ASD is a member of the C Act, the Citizens for Educational Advancement of Alaska's Children. And that organization has recently filed an amicus, joining the lawsuit, if you will. And as part of that, Howard Tricky serving as the attorney that representation, and he's added the point about adequately funding education to the state constitution requirements. So I'd say it's more than we're just watching it. We have someone who's out there communicating the concerns on behalf of rural Alaska as well as representing the district district. So I appreciate you bringing up that forward, planning and thinking, but I don't want us to recite of the obligation that the state has to adequately fund education.
Thank you, Superintendent. Before we go to Mr. Higgins, Elvin and I were at a community council meeting where our state legislature says, "We have a lot of things facing us, but don't forget that the most important thing we have to do is fund education. That's our responsibility." I've got him on tape. I intend to play it frequently for him. Mr. Higgins?
Yeah?
You're in line to speak, sir?
I'm not. I'm just waiting.
Then you need to stop.
I'm sorry. She told me that. She wants your stuff in nervous twitch. Tam?
Yes, as a segue to what Mr. Steele shared, and also to the suggestion from Mr. Flynn, I don't think that we can have the conversation in isolation, because often what we're going to be, as not just voluntarily contribute as a community, but allowed to contribute, is much based on what other districts choose to do because of this equity issue that ties to our federal funds. So to have this discussion in isolation from what every other district and community and the state's going to do complicates it much more. I don't think that should keep us from starting it, but we need to be very, very much aware of the fact that this community may choose to say, "We want to contribute this much," and then be told, "You're not allowed to, because it wouldn't be fair to this other district where they don't have a tax base." So it's a very complicated--
But Tam, isn't that what we ran into this year, where the state legislature passed a limit on how much we could give the school district? Even if we as a city wanted to give them more, we couldn't do it?
Two years ago.
I know, but it's the same thing.
No, it is.
Mr. Hall and then Ms. Johnston.
Yeah, I want to try to clarify something that Mr. Steele said.
Everybody's trying to clarify. I guess I didn't say it.
Well, the reason I'm asking is, you stated that Ketchikan was, the litigation was about the state determining how much they can put in. Ketchikan doesn't want to put anything in.
No, that's what I meant to say.
Yeah, they won't explain to do 100% funding of education.
Ms. Johnston, ma'am?
I just wanted to, and I understand what you're saying, but I think Mr. Flynn is right, right, suggesting it would be proactive, because we need to look at the options and the cost of the options. You know, we need to look at the cost of federal funding and what that means to us locally, what it would mean with what the state does. And I would be more than happy to be part of that Assembly committee if the chair would see that.
Good, because I've already got one. Mr. Flynn's volunteered, and you gives me two.
But I think we need to have a pretty robust discussion on all the options and all the different moving pieces, because it is complicated. And what does federal funding mean? What does state funding mean? And what does local funding mean? So, you know, I just think the door should be thrown wide open in the discussion.
Ms. Gray Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank Mr. Flynn first off for his suggestion. It's a really, really good one. It makes sense, you know, to be prepared. And I was going to volunteer, but now it's you and Jennifer, so, you know. And then, we can talk, yeah.
We'll talk.
And then, and then talking volunteer, you know, it sounds nice in terms of this community voluntarily giving money for education, but don't count on it. There's so many folks in this community who don't have kids in the system and complain about paying taxes down when they don't have kids. And in my opinion, it's not a good thought at all, you know. But let's not count on people volunteering. It's my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Trainey.
Ms. Puckett?
I think it's a good suggestion also, but if you're looking at a resolution with going to AASB, Superintendents Association meets more often, but when, but the goal that we would be looking for if we're looking at that is pretty short, because the resolution process is in November, the first part of November. So it's something that if we were going to do, we would have to act pretty quickly on for pulling in a resolution amendment. Probably be doing it from the floor and discussing it then with other school districts. But I think it's something we should work on.
And AML is the same, first of November.
Cameron, as president of the school board, can you, let's come up with a couple names from you guys. I'll have a couple names from the Assembly, and we can call it whatever we want. Fund the School Funding Committee. We need to have a name for it, and let's get it working, because I want to know potential outcomes and what we can do to mitigate it.
We'll do.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion on this item? If not, we move on. Okay, we've had fun with this one.
Read that one, yeah.
On item B, update on ASD transgender and gender identification guidelines. Superintendent, I'm giving it to you.
All right. You guys were all certainly aware of the conversations made around transgender, gender identity. Actually, the Anchorage School District has had a policy in place for a number of years that addresses this topic. And most recently, we took the initiative to help administrative guidelines provide guidance and support for our administrators, because we're seeing an increasing number of students, employees who are coming forward as transgender or having gender identity needs to be addressed. So we developed this summer some administrative guidelines that we put in writing again to help guide these sensitive conversations and provide such consistency across the district. And it really does fall under Title IX. And so we have our timeline coordinator who works closely with legal counsel put these guidelines in place. And I think just a couple of clarifying points. The guidelines do not give students or employees the unrestricted access to doing any of their needs. I think that's somehow been not clearly communicated. The guidelines are really to develop a process and a plan to ensure that any person, regardless of their transgender or gender identities, has a clear pathway for addressing what they want for an accommodation in a very safe manner and in a procedure that is applied across the district. So the new language that we put out there, because we heard some feedback from people and wanted to provide more clarification, basically extends any student or employee personally impacted by the accommodation of transgender student or colleague, the opportunity to receive a plan, if they will, if you will. So for example, if you're a non-transgender student who's uncomfortable about using or sharing a restroom, you can access an alternative restroom. I think that was the big piece to be cleared up. These guidelines apply to anyone who's asking for accommodation. We will continue to have gender segregated bathrooms and locker rooms. These things are expected to use the bathroom or locker room that reflects their birth gender unless they have an accommodation or they work through this process. Again, this is not something where someone can walk in one day and say, "I'm going to be this person," or go by this name. We have to have conversations about that, and we have to put a plan in place, both to ensure that we're addressing their needs as well as everyone else's needs in a safe and respectful manner. And that, again, that will apply for our staff as well as our students. And just the magnitude of how these discussions have gone, our Title IX coordinator had 100, around 100 contacts last year about this topic. And so that's where people contacted her directly for consultation around, you know, these kinds of, these kinds of needs. So it's something that continues to be processed, and we felt it was very important for us to have the guidelines out there for administrative certificate handle in a sensitive manner.
Thank you, Superintendent. Ms. Tembowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. See, it's going. I can barely talk now. I don't know if I understood you. You had mentioned non-transgender student that is uncomfortable. They will be given accommodations. Am I understanding that? So if there is a transgender student who's using a locker room and somebody else is uncomfortable, then they can go change somewhere else, or?
No, it's just in general. I think that there, it's for whatever the need is for an individual. So the example I gave was one, I think there's an assumption that this is just for a person who has transgender gender identity needs, and it really applies for anyone. So if I am uncomfortable in a certain environment, and I want to have a plan to support that, then I can go to the building principal and work through a plan to accommodate what my needs are. So it doesn't have as much to do with someone else in the room as it is to what my needs are personally.
Any other questions for the superintendent? That was a fast one. Thank you, sir. We're now at MC ASD and new administration discussion on combining services. Who brought that one forward?
Me.
For the first time, it was not me.
Hallelujah.
The two of you are thinking a lot alike, huh? Patrick?
Six years.
Mike?
We played--
You want to come up here? The mayor's gone to something else. You want to come up here?
We played, what, why swap? I don't know if the right term was--
Well, I want somebody from the new administration right here.
We swapped Michaelis and Abbott. They thought we could get some progress paid. We have to maybe, it's hardly a dumb nut. I'm unimpressed. And given the expectation that we're going to lose municipal assistance on sliding scale the next couple of years, we're gone. And the formative fund will be flat at best. We need to get more interest about this. So laying the stage, what are we doing? What conversations are taking place? And if not, which conversations will take place in the next couple of months?
Let's go to Mr. Abbott first, then Superintendent. I'm sure you guys are talking. You know each other well.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Conversations have begun on sort of revisiting a number of the ideas that had been raised before. Tom Roth, the new chief operating officer for the school district, and I have met at least once on this topic already, and I believe there's another meeting scheduled for next week that'll include the superintendent and other members of the municipal team as well. And I'm, you know, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to bring you a progress report on those conversations well before the next quarterly meeting.
I hope so, too.
Anything else, Patrick?
I'll let others be.
Ms. Johnston?
I'm ready, Mr. Grab one.
So do you want to go before her? It's fine. Go ahead. Go ahead, Superintendent.
I want to respond to the question.
Six years you've been on, is that what you said?
Well, we had six years of making progress on this, but we reversed rules, and we made, if I could--
Go ahead.
Maybe it's 2%, but I saw zero progress.
Okay. So I'm not counting, but I think it's like two and a half years. And this is a topic that I think other board members have brought forward, and I think that the timing is right for it. I met with Mayor Berkowitz prior to his being elected, had a conversation with some of my staff, Mike Abbott at the time, Mayor Berkowitz, and I would be interested in having future collaboration, conversations, and actually seeing things come to pass where we have agreements on things. I know that you're all aware, we have an internal auditing position that you share with the public fund fuel purchasing. We've had some conversations about ASD people mover. I don't think we want to make light of those opportunities that are already out there. We're expanding it even further. We have a card system with the library and how we have students now getting access to those things. So I don't want to minimize what we're doing and that progress that we're making. I think you have to take what's available to you sometimes and use it and nurture that. At the same time, it is an opportunity with the new mayor and with me having, you know, a renewed interest in making things feel more collaborative and more shared. So I won't commit to you that we'll have, you know, items that you would like to have as a shared service model, but I would guarantee you that we will have items that I think may contain elements of it or still provide a benefit to the municipality, the students, the city, and do it in a very long-term, sustainable manner. So I do appreciate you bringing that up, and I, like Mr. Abbott said, we've talked about it, gone back and forth with different concepts already. It may not be, you know, one full area, but it might be elements of it that we end up sharing our services with. But we're moving forward with it.
Anything, Ms. Els, Mr. Flynn, Ms. Johnston?
So glad I can come after you. Because, you know, working on this for almost nine years and seeing the opportunities many times, there is always a discussion-- times, there was always a discussion whether we should allow administrations to work on it and the approach that the Superintendent has discussed, or if we could set a policy. And I'm at the point to say that maybe the two boards need to step up and create a policy that is a little bit more proactive, might not be quite to either administration's liking. But I think it's time, particularly with the funding situation, to basically do a two-by-four. And I would suggest that if there's others interested in this, you know, I would be more than happy to create a, you know, I guess really all we have is by resolution. But I really do think that it's getting beyond the time of we can manage it, do it sustainable, can, you know, let us have time to create this. Because you're never going to have two administrations with their own departments. It's a question, who's on first? And, and who does the best job? And as writing a resolution, I would want to go for a center of excellence. But that's always a subjective kind of discussion, or it can be. Each of us do have, and that's how we did the, the, well, the ombudsman's has always been that way.
Internal auditor?
The internal auditor. I've, you know, been very thankful to the Superintendent because he did take my suggestions seriously as far as the transit, and that's, that's made a huge impact. Library's looking good, but these are little things. We're, we're talking about major departments. And I think as a policy setting, both of us policy-setting boards, we need to set the environment in which the administrations need to work. I'd be glad to be part of that.
Mr. Hall, sir.
I will, number one, thank Mr. Flynn for bringing this topic forward and play off a bit of what Ms. Johnston has just said. I'm going to tell you, at AML, we've got a real fear of what's coming at us. And like I say, we're seeing it in smaller communities today. But it's going to be in our community. And Mr. Flynn, you're right. A couple of little things here and a couple of little things there aren't, aren't going to get this done. And what we're talking about is what Ms. Johnston is saying. This has got to be taken at a, at a very strong, aggressive type and long-range planning like you're talking about with funding. We, we need to get a plan in place. And the thing that's going to make this extremely difficult is in order to be able to do it, jobs are going to be lost, things are going to be combined, you know, one maintenance department, not two. And the priorities on who gets what. When I was Chair of the Parking Authority, we wanted to go get a new computer system, but, you know, the administration said, "You don't need to do that. We've got capacity." And we were very receptive to that. Our capacity was available from 2:00 to 4:00 in the morning. And we were, we were more than welcome to step in. And that's a lot of what happens. And I genuinely believe that. If we're going to do it, we're talking about a whole new maintenance department with one head of the department and they're responsible for taking every, taking care of everybody equally. Not one department taking over another department, but we're talking about a paradigm shift that's going to create a whole new structure and could be very significant savings. And we're not very far away from where we're going to be looking for significant savings in our budget. So, thank you. And Ms. Johnston, I couldn't agree with you more. It's got to happen.
Mr. Steele, sir.
I'm suspect, I always have been suspect. I don't think, I don't think the School District is looking forward to the Assembly telling them what to do. I don't think that the Assembly is looking forward to the School District telling them what to do or setting those priorities. It's going to be extremely difficult. There are some opportunities out there and we need to look for them. But they have, the district and the municipality have different goals and different pressures. And it's, it's going to be a very touchy situation.
Ms. Johnston?
So sorry for double-dipping. But one other thing that we need to keep in mind is we have an aging workforce. And I don't know if any of you follow the Help On It ads and what's available in this city, but it is picking up. There are a lot of, a lot of positions that are remaining unfilled due to an aging workforce. So this isn't just a matter of who's on first. This isn't just a matter of state funding. This is a matter of human capital and human assets. And so this isn't something where we're getting rid of jobs, but we are getting more efficient on how we activate those jobs. So I don't want us, you know, this, we need to change our, our, our vision and what we're looking at.
Superintendent?
I just wanted to add that I, I am very open to this conversation. I, I would like to engage in it. And I think that both having a tactical conversation about what are some of the very sort of upfront things that we can look at right now, but having a longer-term vision conversation about what, how can we look towards the future and see how we can be more efficient as, as an entire system? I'm very open that that conversation is definitely like to be involved in.
Ms. Gray Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Ms. Johnston, for being a cheerleader. And I guess being a South Anchorage representative is contagious because this goes way back when Pat Abney was on Assembly. And there are a lot of us.
What's wrong with when Pat Abney was on the Assembly?
Well, in terms of talking about consolidation, there's a file downstairs if anybody wants to see it.
I was on it.
I know. And let's keep in mind when we, when we talk about consolidating, ASD has, what, 10,000 employees? Yeah. We have 3,000 employees. So think about that when we're talking about combining, combining maintenance departments, which is a really, really great idea. Thank you, Mr. Hall. But it may take for the number of people that we're talking about represented, a, a couple of directors for the maintenance department and a few deputies. So that's just an example of the things that we need to take into consideration when, when we're talking about combining departments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hall, sir?
Yeah, I'll just follow from all the comments. Ladies and gentlemen, if we don't do this, the taxpayer and the voter is going to pretty quick tell us we don't have an option but to go forth and do it. So that, I think that's ultimately who's going to be really driving it. It's going to be our taxpayer. And thank goodness, you know, Anchorage, we do have the ability to say that because people that live in this community, they're not paying a lot to the state, but they do pay significantly to fund local governments, especially residential.
Before I go to you, Mr. Abbott, since I have a little bit of history on this. In the early 90s, we spent the entire summer working on unification. And what we found was a fight for turf between the School District and the MOA. Neither one was right, neither one was wrong, but there was always a turf fight going on because they were worried about losing jobs. And we have to figure out how to get over that and just tell them, "It's time to move forward." I know I brought a little ordinance forward one time that caused some havoc because I checked to see how the School District got control of the buildings, school buildings. And I found the semi ordinance gave that control of the School District. My question I asked legal is, could we simply take it back? And the answer is yes. There's something that can simply rescind that ordinance and all the school buildings come back to the MOA operation. Not sure we want to do it, but I had that answer settled for me. Mr. Abbott, you're the city manager, you're also the new administration, sir, and you worked with the School District.
Yes, sir.
So tell us where we're going with this, unification?
I think you're going to see a robust conversation between two agencies that are looking for solutions that result in more efficient delivery of services for both education and general government. There's examples of it going on, many of which have been described. I can't imagine a scenario where that's not going to increase. So there's been preliminary conversations with the School District already. I don't think it's going to be very long before you're going to see concrete proposals coming forward. The administration would not recommend sort of unilateral action on the part of the Assembly of the sort, Mr. Chairman, that you apparently.
I just said it can be done. Didn't say I was doing it.
The Charter's pretty clear in that it, it certainly delegates most of the educational management responsibilities to the School District. And I think the administration would recommend that we honor the spirit of that, even if in fact there is a legal opportunity for the, the municipality to Bigfoot the process occasionally. So I think we're much better off if we end up with bilateral agreement on the division of assignments between the two entities.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott. Ms. Dabowski?
I'm trying not to talk, but I can't help myself. And I, I appreciate the conversation. And, you know, things are coming to my mind. One, I hear what Mr. Abbott is saying, and I see a difference between educational management and facility management.
Can you ask?
And so, as, you know, the city essentially was established in the 70s. If it wasn't until an assembly ordinance till the 90s.
Actually, 40 years ago, ma'am.
Seventies, well, yeah. Seventy-five, right?
Yeah. It was on the 15th of September, forty-some odd years ago.
Yeah. So that's why I say I think there is this, sometimes it's interesting as you watch elected officials because often they don't react until there's a crisis. Shocking, I know. But the reality of the situation is, as a state, when we're looking at potentially $20 a barrel of oil, and just in the last three, in the last two weeks, I've met three people personally that have already lost their jobs. Two of them were slow workers that were already laid off. And one of them I spoke to this morning on the way in, and he said, "Oh, this is just the beginning for his company." I won't name the company, but, you know, so the reality of the situation is, we are in a situation, as Mr. Hall advocated, have got to start paying attention, but taxpayers only have so much money, number one. And if they're losing their jobs, and, you know, I, I hear what Ms. Hall is saying, or Ms. Johnston is saying about, you know, this aging workforce. But the real, economics is economics. And as, as the workforce tends to shrink because of the economics of, of oil and our dependency on it, I think that's going to be something that we're all going to struggle with. But I have another question. Over the years, I've heard some of the resistance to combining like fleet maintenance has been because, and this could be completely wrong, so dispel the rumor that it's not true, but has been because it has to do with funding. And if for some reason you guys, if we absorb your fleet maintenance or vice versa, if something happens, is there transportation dollars that potentially could be lost? Or is ASD holding on to fleet maintenance to preserve some level of funding?
I can't confirm or deny the rumor. I've never heard that discussion in my two and a half years beyond that, the school district of fleet maintenance. So I think, you know, continuing the discussion and then having more direct investigation of certain areas, I think would probably benefit us so that we could dispel that and really get down to brass tacks as to whether or not we can something.
Well, and it, yeah, and if it's, if it's true, if there is some level of funding that is tied to those dollars, you know, you just have to run the numbers. Where's the real benefit and who, who runs those services?
Right.
And I think that's just, I mean, of course, I have every bit of confidence, everyone, you know, would be mindful of that. But it's just something I just throw out there for you to think about or dispel or confirm or whatever. But as those discussions transpire, it's something that's considered and in fact is a factor.
Yeah. We would look at that. And then I would go back to what Ms. Johnston said also, we would look at providing excellence. We'll provide that excellent service as well.
Mr. Croft, sir?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess, I've been working on this for six years and frustrated progress, too. The hasn't been exactly zero, though. The two major things over that period of time, one is we asked on buses, we're going to be able to move. And that, that's been a good success. It's on a smaller, but at least I started and it's given a lot of flexibility for students to do after school. It'll be more.
You didn't spend the time getting people to the table. I did.
Yeah. I'm sure a lot of effort to get that going, but then we weren't able to do that. The other major offer that came down in that period was the municipality's invitation to join in the SAP soft courses, which we turned down. And so as we go through this, Mr. Abbott and the School District, I mean, what we're really talking about is excellence and good decisions. Cooperating on the wrong decision isn't going to help anything. So, yes, we want to do it, but we want, the ultimate thing is to make the right decision. We're very glad we turned down that opportunity.
We'll send you a bill later. Tam?
Yes, I just, in my memory, too, that there was also an offer made concerning combining the facility for IT and that we were turned down by the municipality to relocate, when we relocated to a repurposed school on Bates. And I don't know what our current capacity is, but there may be that discussion is, is to be reopened again. And I do want to tell our Chair, our President, that if, I, I think we need to give the administration some time to continue these meetings that they've initiated. And, but in a certain period of time, as to be determined by the two Chairs, if we don't see forward progress, I would be willing to work with Assembly members in continuing this discussion from our legislative.
Thank you. We'd like to have a report within the next, by the next time we have one of these meetings, I'd like some concrete evidence given to us on where we're at, what's been done. Otherwise, there are recursive methods. Mr. Higgins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I appreciate the discussion going on here. And I think back to the 1990s where the facility management view was done, and it was really more a power struggle as to who controlled it. The report came back and said the School District was going efficient. But I also look at this and I wonder whether or not we're dealing with efficiency or size or just the management at the time in the various departments. I, I look at a lot of these, these organizations and they go back to the garage shop type approach. If you want to, you know, deal with the bureaucracy, you want to get the responsiveness, and you want to get the kind of services you need. We have not, keep our schools open. Maintenance has got to keep those places going. That's a priority. You've got the priorities, please invite, you've got other options. And so there's going to be a lot there. I just want to make sure that whatever discussion we're doing, it makes logical sense that there's an economy of scale, there is some efficiency in the management, and not just one side doing it better than the other. I think of IT. IT was an excellent example to come together because the backup IT equipment could be used for both. And the savings there were pretty substantial, yet it didn't go forward. And to me, that one surprised me a lot. That was a win-win situation where we both would benefit off the cost savings and we didn't go forward. I think the internal auditor is a great example of working together. We recognize the benefit of the quality of services that we get from the municipality and take advantage of that. But I just want to, you know, a good management review of this and good opportunities to almost say, is this a situation where we're going to save by combining it, or is this one group doing it better than the other? The IT management systems out there that are in problem for both sides at different times is just an example. You fix a problem, it's just transferring it. So I, I really would like to see combinations. I guess we, I just want to make sure it's an objective review that looks at all options on getting, getting our costs down and getting the services out there that the public is doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we move on. We're now down to Item D, discussion, switching the start times for elementary and high school students. We have nothing else to do with that, so Superintendent, that's got to be from you guys.
Nope, but we'll gladly address it. It actually did originate from us, but not from this agenda.
Okay.
It just came from the Assembly.
Which Assembly member doing? Mr. Flynn?
This is somebody who's always.
Aren't you too old to be going to high school?
So, someone, or, sorry. Senator Croft once served with Representative Terry Cropper, who once rose to speak to a budget amendment on the House floor and said, "Mr. Speaker, I rise to speak to this issue because my wife would be mad at me if I didn't." In a similar vein, my wife has been nagging me about this issue for years and I resisted. I said, "Call Eric, let him do it." She never did it. So it's been a subject that's been addressed in many different jurisdictions, not just ours. And the issue is around essentially latchkey kids, children with special parents and some of the, say, less than savor behavior that teenagers perhaps get into when they're allowed out of school too often. But also in that their biological rhythms are such, they tend not to go to bed at a reasonable hour, tend to rise late. reasonable hour, tend to rise late, and their academic achievement in those first couple of periods of the day suffers, because they're ambulatory, but not functionary. And so, I figured it was worthwhile to generate a discussion, and I'm sure you guys have had talks about it, and I just wanted to sort of get an idea of where you were, and what we could do to talk to you.
There's a history behind this conversation, goes back decades. Mike Ramsey, who pointed out that his father used to be a principal in the Ancre School District, and when he was, his father was a principal, they were having discussions about this. So, as soon as I became superintendent, guess who I received a letter from? His father, asking, have you guys considered this, a whole idea of start times? And, and we have considered it. We did some informal kind of investigation of it in the mid-2000s, and, and it started with just talking to principals in their schools about, what would the impact be if we made a change of start time? So, at the high school level, we've got this whole list generated of, you'd be talking about 11:00 p.m. football games, you'd be talking about, you know, kids not having time to work, you know, because they're going to be, when you went to the elementary, and what would you have there? You'd be talking about kids who would essentially be more latchkey, because there is no place for them to go, or they'd be walking to school unsupervised in the morning. So, we started with that and realized that we didn't have a real solution. Then we looked at the second phase of that, which was, well, could we just add more busing to the system? And Mr. Abbott was with us at the time, but eight to 12 million dollars for us to add additional buses, so that we don't take the staggered approach, which is what we have right now. And that's really the reason why we have the start times the way they are, so that we can get our high school kids to school with a bus, and then take that bus and get our middle school kids to school, and then our elementary school kids to school, and then pick up our high school kids. So, that whole piece, you know, so 12 million dollars annually, we could address this issue. It, going with that approach. But then, recently, the Pediatric Society has brought forward a lot of, a lot of studies, a lot of research, a lot of commentary about what you just mentioned, about the sleep patterns of children, and what's good and what's not good for them. So, our board had a retreat earlier this year, and that was one of the topics that we put forward for a potential work session. And we're going to have that happen in the fall, closer to December. We've also been gathering a lot of information, research behind it. I know that Seattle, or St. Paul Public Schools went through that. There's a school in Washington, in Washington is going through with that right now, about how you go about changing those times and having those conversations. It's as complex as a boundary change, a closure, all of those things that the schools and districts have to decide upon. So, we are moving forward with at least a work session on it. We've been capturing some information, and I would, I would welcome the chance to revisit with all of you about it again in the future. I don't have a solution today. I just feel it's difficult. I know, as a former teacher, the impact it has on kids when they're going to bed at 11:00 o'clock at night, for whatever reason, and they're having to wake up at 7:00 in the morning, to get to school at 7:30, or to participate in a program on activity prior to school. So, there are a lot of, a lot of things to consider. Very easy, sometimes, to just say, it makes sense, we need to do it. The difficult part is the implementation of that. And, so, we are, we're looking forward to adding that to our list of big conversations to take place this year.
Ms. Johnston?
I, I just wanted to, when you're having that discussion, don't forget the partnership with public transportation, because you would, if you do a partnership with public transportation, there would be some high schools that could change their start times.
And we, I guess, just, if I could.
Go ahead.
We do have some staggered starts, there's some changes in starts at schools. Diamond High has had that for a number of years, where they do professional development, and so, they do a delayed start on Monday. I know that East High School recently put into a motion, a plan for that as well, and they're able to do that in large part because of the transportation that's being provided through people that were, those are pockets, and those are ideas and concepts. So, you know, again, maybe, maybe not whole system, but maybe parts. We're certainly having the discussion, and I'd be curious to know what the preferred switch would be from your, your family perspective.
Well, for us, elementary starts at 7:30, and, and high school at 9:00, 9:00, 8:50, but.
So, flipping.
I think the clerk.
I know, I'm going to go to Tam, then the clerk. Tam?
Thank you. Just so you're aware, I am the board member that really pushed that to be put into our work session, and to have that discussion this year. Because, Rep., in just doing a simple flip, I've been promoting the idea of, at least for the high schools, a longer utilization of a facility, where we basically have nine periods of school happening. Not that a student would attend all nine, but that some of the staff would be staggered in terms of their start time, and students would have some options that then change the paradigm of, oh, when am I going to do my sports practice? Well, maybe your sports practice is going to be at 7:00 a.m. rather than 2:00 p.m. When am I going to work? Well, you're going to have to work around, I, I understand that argument, but I always say, my prerogative as a board member is not to figure out when you're going to work, it's when you're ready to be educated, and what's the best situation for you. And then, the whole childcare piece, too, is, you know, if you're paying for childcare preschool, pre-, or school, and after-school, and that's all pushed to an after-school scenario, it's not necessarily going to be more expensive, and in some cases, might be more doable for, for certain families. So, any, and I understand what the superintendent says, this is a very complicated situation, and you start to impact many, many families, but I think, as a board member, I have an obligation to look at the research that talks about what is best for the learning environment for our students. And I know our high school students would be potentially, or I've done potential research that they would definitely be impacted in a positive way in their academic achievement if we started them later. So, I feel we have an obligation to have a very deep conversation and figure out how to make this work, and to potentially increase these partnerships and utilize our public transportation system to make that happen. So, I'm a big proponent of the discussion.
Thank you, Tam. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Graff, I just wanted to point out that, in your comment, you mentioned about students who stay up until 11:00 and get up at 7:00. And I have a 15-year-old, and I know Ms. Debowski does, too. My 15-year-old's bus is, pickup is at 5:00 to 7:00. So, he doesn't get up at 7:00, he usually gets up at 6:00.
Every student's different.
He gets up at 6:00. At West's Open House, Mr. Stone, the principal, at the comments said, "Parents, you better be in line on Hillcrest Drive at 10:00 after 7:00, or your kid will not get here on time." So, that's another issue, is, it's hard to get up at 7:00 and get to school at 7:30, because traffic at most of the schools is pretty intense at about that time. Thank you.
No problem. So, it's good to hear from my mother. Tam?
Yeah. I'm looking at it from a single parent point of view, and, and a safety point of view. I, I remember riding on the school bus when I came on the school board way back when, up on the hillside. And in the wintertime, driving a school bus up on the hillside is a, is a challenge. Narrow roads, sharp turns, and then, and then you have kids waiting at a bus stop, usually parents and cars are there, too. But they're waiting for the school bus, and you're picking up, even picking up young kids at that time. It's dark, it's cold, it's icy. And then, the parents, if you have a single parent, which end of the spectrum do you do? If you have two kids, when are you home? How do you, how do you, how do you do your work environment in terms of start time? Campfire is not provided everywhere. That was a great option that I used, to be able to take my kids to campfire in the morning, and then after-school, also, they have the same program. But it's, it's extremely difficult for a single parent to, to juggle these issues. The older kids are more responsible and able to do things on their own, the younger kids aren't. So, you have to, you have to really structure it so that families can deal with it. It is age-old, and it's not homogeneous. Everybody has their challenges, and it's, I'd say, tread lightly, but, but, you know, Tam's absolutely right, in terms of what the research shows, in terms of the older kids doing better. Anyway, it's not an easy task, that's all I have to say.
New discussion, before we move on? Thank you. Next time, this enrollment update. Flynn, did you give us this one, too? Okay. Superintendent.
So, we actually have this as part of our presentation. It's a little separate to some degree, but I just wanted to provide the Assembly with some information that you may not be aware of. Our enrollment has increased this year. In fact, we, we saw very early on, almost the first couple days of the school year, over our projections, what we anticipate, and we saw those numbers grow at a rate that wasn't following our previous trend. And so, with that, the board supported allowing us to allocate additional SBD for our schools. And so, we have about a 1% increase to our enrollment in the first day injection, in the slide. Starts out, first day enrollment, just under 46,000, and then you go up to 48,000 on the 10th day. And then, we're anticipating that, once we get into October, we see a slight dip down, for whatever reason, haven't been able to determine the, the real cause of that. Some speculate that the bid in comes out and drops, but that is not something that is real. So, I think the other thing that's really interesting to, to notice is that you have about a 2,000-student increase in 10 days. And so, we're getting this massive influx of students coming into school who were perhaps not even known to be coming into our school system. And sometimes, you have students who transition, and they move, and you know they're leaving, but you don't know they're going to show up at your school. But the impact that that has on our, our schools, from just trying to coordinate statistically what a classroom looks like, to making sure that we have, if they have special needs, that we have the services available to them. So, there's a wide range of students who are coming in in the first 10 days of school, and it's a constant, constant challenge to, to make sure that we're ready for them when they arrive. So, you can see the increase we've had. Wanted to make the Assembly aware of that, because they know the other districts that we're talking about, their level of increase, but certainly, ours is up over last year, roughly 200 students, I would say.
Questions from Assembly members, or comments from school board members? Anything? That was relatively painless.
I have one question.
That's Ms. Debowski. How's your voice doing?
It's, we'll make it through. I, I'm trying to pull up the email, and I don't have it in front of me. But this week, I started looking at teacher numbers, and I was a little confused, and I, I just haven't been able to connect with, I think his name's Todd, in the HR department. But when I'm looking at a CAFER, there's one page that shows, and I'm trying to pull it up, I'll share it with you later if it's helpful, but there's one page that shows how many teachers specifically there are. But then, when I look at the page that shows teacher education, you know, it shows some teachers have bachelor's, master's, whatnot. When I add them up, the numbers never match. And I'm sure there's a reason, maybe it's some are part-time, some are full-time, I don't really know, but can you explain to me?
No, just based on what you're describing, I can't. I'd have to, I'd have a better understanding, and I don't, I hate to speculate, at least, what document, what part of the document you're looking at.
Okay. Well, I found the email, so, but I'm happy to show it to you offline, but what I, what I guess I'm looking at, is as we're looking at the enrollment numbers, I'm trying to understand, as a, on a historical level, how the teacher positions have been fluctuating with, with enrollment numbers, or if there's any correlation in that.
Well, certainly, our enrollment drives what our allocation is.
I would think so.
Time equivalence.
But I, I can't understand, in the CAFER, why there's a big variance. I mean, I think there was 371 positions different. I mean, it was reported as, this is how many teachers there are one year, and then, when you look at the teacher education, you add it up, there's over 300 in a position difference. So, I'll show it to you. I'm sure there's a logical reason, I just don't know which number's accurate.
Yeah. I would hope they're both accurate.
Well, and I'm sure for a different reason. I'm sure they're both accurate, but I guess what I'm trying to get at is, where's the variance, and which one, when you're saying, this is how many teachers ASD has that are teaching, maybe not all are in the classroom, maybe, you know, vice versa, so maybe that's where it's coming from.
Sounds like they answer two different questions, or have two different purposes.
Potentially.
If you, if you would like, you can send me the email, and we'll clarify.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Flynn? Okay. Another discussion. Tam, we're moving on. We're now down to Destination 2020, Famer for Success. Who brought that one forward?
This is.
You guys did? Okay. Superintendent?
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to be able to share information with the Assembly regarding our school district, and some of the positive things that we're doing. And I want to start by just thanking the Assembly for this discussion we're having today. I think that maybe more so than ever, I'm getting a, a real sense of these conversations being about our education system for our students here in Anchorage. And I don't know why, maybe it's just I'm seeing the light, whether from the discussion around the debt reimbursement, and how that affects education, to the conversation about shared services, and just feel very appreciative of all of your interest and willingness to support what we're doing. So, I wanted to walk through Destination 2020, and I'll start by just giving you some background. I don't think it hurts to hear this information more than once, so if you've heard it before, it will just reinforce maybe what you've already heard, or give you some new, easy to break. We have more, as you can see from our enrollment, we have more than 47,000 students in the Anchorage School District. We are one of the largest public schools in the nation. We have 130 schools and programs, so it's not 130 schools alone, it's programs within the schools, ranging from immersion programs in our elementary schools, all the way to CTE classes and alternative programs in schools and our secondary division. You also know that the local researcher identified Anchorage schools as being the most diverse in the country. For the 2010 census report that came out, we had three of the most diverse tracks in the nation. In that report, he heard that information and thought, you've got a diverse community, you probably have diverse high schools, and started with our high schools, and found we had the top three most diverse high schools in the nation. And that's with the Bronx, it's with Los Angeles, Houston, it was East High School, Bartlett, and then West High School. And then Diamond was actually the top ten as well. Then he went a little further, and looked at our middle schools, and found that we had six of the most diverse middle schools in the nation. And looked at the elementary schools, and found that we had 19 of the 20 most diverse elementary schools in the nation, with the 20th school in that group being a school in Hawaii. What it, what it means, it means a couple of things. Simplifying that, that research was, you just took randomly selected two students, the probability of them being of different race, and ethnicity was off the charts, you know, so, no two students were of the same background. I share this with folks, and then I think some people thread the question, so what, you had no control over that, why are you proud of that? I think what it does is, it demonstrates just the opportunities that we have to learn from other cultures, to learn about the different ways to communicate with everyone else, and it's part of creating that global citizenry and the global education that it makes us so critical in the 21st century. So, we're very, very excited about having that, and I'm also pleased to see that the municipality is highlighting diversity, and the things they have going on, as we're welcoming Anchorage into this context. And I'd love to see more of that partnership with the municipality, as we, we celebrate our diversity, both within the district and the community and state as a whole. So, one of the things that we've done since implementing Destination 2020 is, we've looked to refine and to really provide a greater framework for how we can use, utilize our resources. to refine and to really provide a greater framework for how we can utilize our resources. So we're calling it a framework for success. There are four key areas, you can see those in the little graphic there. The first one is focusing on students. The second is investing in staff. The third is engaging the community, and then the fourth is strengthening our services. And that's what we're committed to doing. Obviously, the focus on students should be our priority and we really want to make sure that we're letting everyone know when we're making decisions and we're talking about things that we need to improve on. It's really centered around the students and the experience that they're receiving. I've shared this story a few times now, but about a month ago, I had the honor to attend Tom Roth's retirement ceremony. And for those of you that heard, Tom Roth is our new chief operating officer. He served many years in the military and then is having a retirement ceremony. And when I was there, I had a few people at my table talking and one of the gentlemen said, I want to thank you for the work that you do in the district. It's nice, you know? And then he went on to tell me a specific story. He told me that he had a daughter, Johanna, who was in our state school for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing program, and she had been receiving support in the program for many years, but it was within the program. That's where she was getting most of her education. And she came to a point in her learning and her maturity where she felt like she needed more, felt like she needed to be challenged more, she needed more opportunities. And so she approached our administration at the time and said, I'd like to, what we call mainstream, and spend more time in accessing other courses. Specifically, she wanted to get AP Advanced Placement Math courses. So we worked that out, allowed that to happen, and he said, you know, the fact that she was able to come forward and ask for that, felt comfortable doing that, was in large part because of the environment you created in the district. And the fact that you were able to support her in that and offer those courses for her was even more amazing because she went on to graduate and continued to pursue her career dream, I guess, if you will, her aspiration. He told me she's now working for NASA in California because of that, that experience and those opportunities. And so that really reinforces to me when we're talking about our focus on students, it's about setting those expectations, those high expectations, and ensuring that we don't limit students based on, you know, one or two conversations or things that people might appear define who they are. Those expectations are something that we're embracing, and you may know that we adopted new standards both in the district, Anchorage School District, and the state of Alaska, and we were recently, this past year, assessed on those standards. And so we're expecting we have a new baseline now. With that information, we have not received fully what those results are. The state put out the statewide information on what's called AMP, the Alaska Measures of Progress. We're expecting to receive the district scores and the actual school individual scores around the middle of October. And I will reinforce over and over again, new standards, new assessment in terms of how the students are being assessed, they're using technology now, and I think some of you had the opportunity to see what those assessments were like, we shared that with you a couple of years ago. We can expect a new baseline, and the new baseline scores will be significantly different than what we've seen. I can assure you that. You don't raise your standards and change your assessment and expect scores to look the same or students to be achieving at the same definition, if you will. So the important piece for us has been to take that information as what it is. It's a data point. It's certainly tied to the state standards. We need to accept that and focus on improving wherever we are, really looking at that information and saying, are there resources that we need to adjust and support, we need to provide differently? And we have to have the resolve as a community, as a state, to not back away from that, to not say, they're really too hard and therefore we need to change our tests or we need to modify that. And so we're committed to that, and I wanted to give poor President, Chairman President Diya a chance to share anything he'd like, because I know his work and what he's seen around data and these assessments, he's got a perspective as well.
Thank you. Yes, I, I think that the, what we know is, we know that as Superintendent Graff said, things will look very different. We have set extremely higher standards than what we had in the past, and we have a new assessment. The, the standards that we have in the past were developed more, more than a decade ago, and the quote unquote cut score that was developed for those was originally put at a lower level than most educators would have preferred, but the idea was that it would go up over time, but it didn't. And so that's one of the reasons we're, we're seeing such, such a significant change. So the state of Alaska adopted new standards. The state of Alaska then conducted the Alaska Measures of Progress Exam statewide and used those results to bring together educators from across the state and educators from rural, from urban, from different ethnicities, different subject matters, and they, they worked very hard on looking at those, those results to develop what those levels of, what those levels were. And so they, they developed four levels, and, and the, the top two are three means that they have met the standards, and four means they have more than met the standards. Two means that they have partially met standards but not met that threat, threshold. Essentially, they are not proficient. And one means that they are farther behind. So the, the, they, they set, they set that quote unquote cut score and, and presented that to the State Board recently. The State Board has then given 30 days for public comment, and once that's finished, the State Board will, will vote to either approve or not approve that quote unquote cut, cut score. We, we believe that that will have happen. There, there's the note, no sign, this is a point that it won't. Once that happens, then all of the data will be distributed to districts throughout this state. This, what I handed out is what the Department of Education and Early Development has released in terms of the entire state. Do you have, you have one? So, so the, what I wanted to, to share quickly is that, is that as a state, in, in math, we are seeing a range between under 40% to under 20% kids that are meeting standards. In English and Light Language Arts, we're seeing a range from the low 40s to the mid The, in Anchorage, the Anchorage School District, I'll give you an example, in, in eighth grade math, ASAS district were around 69%. In third grade reading, we're in, we're in the low 80s. So we're going to see, there's no doubt, a significant change. ASAS state were around 75%. 75% of our kids, ASAS state, are proficient in reading and writing in math. And what this is telling us is that as a state, under the new system, we're going to be looking at more 25%. So what I wanted to say is that, that I expect there to be a lot of pushback. I expect there to be questioning of, of our standards, questioning of the process, questioning of the exams, all kinds of things, but I hope, and I hope that this group will, will stand together to, to support the fact that we've raised standards and that we now have a more realistic look of where our kids are on this particular exam, and that we will have the resolve that other states have had, and there are good examples of states that have had this exact same process, that over, over the following one, two, three years have recovered from, from those lower test scores and have come back up. But there's been other states who have turned around and have, and have not done, done that math. So my, my hope moving forward is, is that we will have the resolve that Superintendent Graff talked about and, and be able to continue to have high standards for our kids.
President, when is this being made public? Do we know?
This is public.
Okay.
And the, 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 the State School Board is receiving public comment. They've already put out dates for that, and, and they're meeting to make that the decision is in operation.
Thank you, President. Ms. Johnston?
The school district did the Common Core. When it comes out, it'd be nice to see the two scores next to each other. I realize that there's some apples and oranges, but we did collect a lot of data previously with the, what, three years of Common Core?
Yes. Could I jump in?
Go ahead.
You can't, what, what we're looking at under the Common Core was the standards-based assessment, the SBA or state-based, I forget my, ESA and SBA. The SBA, that was a completely different assessment. That was not on Common Core, that was on the state standards at that time.
Right, but didn't, didn't the school district, didn't Anchorage School District do the Common Core?
Yes, we did.
I just, I just think it would be interesting to see a comparison between that and what the Alaska measure is now.
The assessment is the same. We're using the same assessment.
Okay, so.
Throughout the entire state.
So we should be able to glean some data from both of them?
No, let me, let me back up here and see if I can help clarify this. The standards that we adopted under the Common Core, at that time we adopted those standards, the state assessment we were using was still based on the old state standards.
Right.
So we were being evaluated on those state standards, not on our Common Core standards.
Right.
Now, when the state made their transition to new standards, they're substantially similar to the Common Core, which we've already adopted. So that's what we're being evaluated on now, or that's what the students are being assessed on now, is that those state standards, which is a new assessment altogether.
Right.
You can't take the old.
No, I'm not saying the old state assessment, I'm saying the Anchorage, so didn't Anchorage do some testing themselves on their students?
We, we have done assessments on students, but not related to the Common Core alignment. That's, that's separate. Those are internal assessments that teachers are using to determine whether or not a child is making, you know, or meeting kind of some basic reading assessments, you know, but not related to a standard. It's more.
Just personally, I am 100% behind this. And, you know, if there, if you'd like a resolution from the Assembly or whatever, I'd be more than happy, because I think it's very important that we work with the state and we do raise our expectations and.
I think that's what President, President Diya was trying to reinforce, and Commissioner Hanley presented an article, I think recently, where he used the analogy of a baseball player in the minor leagues who bats, you know, 450 batting average, and you think, wow, they're, they're doing great for minor league baseball, they're doing really well. And then they transition into the majors and they start off their season and they end up at around 240, you know?
They just try to open the nose on them.
So are they now, are they now.
Less proficient than they were before.
Player, you know? You're, you've got new standards for them, you're assessing them differently, and essentially what you have is you have new baseball. So with that information, you're, our job, the job of me as a superintendent, everyone else, is to make sure we're investing our support in our staff so that they can improve those, those outcomes for students. And that's essentially what we're working on. So once we get that information, we're going to then take that and revisit how we're supporting our staff, you know, making sure that we're providing what they need for our students to be successful. A couple of years ago, we had an opportunity to capture a National Math and Science Initiative grant called the NIMZI Grant. It was a grant designed to target students of military populations or concentrations in schools. And so Bartlett and Eagle River were the two high schools that were utilizing this grant, and it's had huge impacts for our, our staff. What we've done is we provided training for them around advanced placement courses. We expanded that to go into our middle schools, so now we have middle school teachers who are receiving pre-AP courses, training. And it's not just at those schools, it's district-wide. We trained about 250 teachers on AP coursework and the ideas of how do we support those kinds of students. So the notion of investing in staff is something that we are committed to, and it looks, we'll use different resources to access that support. The other thing I wanted to share about the National Math and Science Initiative is that at Bartlett last year, through this effort, we saw an 11% increase in the number of students who were taking AP exams. 11%, so we're getting kids exposed to that. And certainly, it's easy to say that, that's great, they, you got 11% more, but how are they doing with that? You know, what is the, what is the success rate? Even better, the percentage of exams with a passing score increased by 31% in that, that population. So the teachers, staff are getting trained on it, and they're raising the expectations for students, and the students are getting the support they need so that they can be successful. So we're very pleased with that. The third area was about engaging our community, and we know that investing in our staff and recognizing all they do goes well beyond just the Anchorage School District. I know that the Assembly's been supportive of this in the past, and we have people who've done great things, you've even offered resolutions, and we want to continue to do that kind of work and make sure that the community is really able to see the value of what public education is providing, not only for perhaps their children, but their neighbors, their grandkids, and the city and state at large. This is a montage of pictures from last spring where we had 2,600 ASD graduates, and you can see the overwhelming support that's out there on the reader boards congratulating our graduates. This was largely coordinated through 90% by 2020, which is an organization from United Way that we partnered with, really focusing on collective action. And the goal is to really align supports and partnerships so that we're, we're all doing the same thing in a unified manner. And we're, we're pleased to have that continuing. Again, this was also part of our school business partnership program, ways to engage the community and getting them to see the benefit of what's going on. Some of the benefit from them, we believe the perceived benefit, this is our graduation rate, 2004, you can see we had about just under a 60% graduation rate, 2004, 2005. I shared that with someone that day and they were like, we accepted that, you know? Well, there's a lot, a lot to be said about that number. I think at that time, graduation rates were calculated differently, so in all fairness, full disclosure, things have changed. But you can still see 2013, 14, we were at 73.5%. This year, we're at 80, 80%. Again, full disclosure, 2013, 14, some will say, well, they got rid of the HSGQE, so that no longer is part of a, you know, a requirement for students. And so we've looked at that, we've done a little analysis of that, and we looked at the past history of our HSGQE. In fact, we remember having the conversation with all of you here last year, or previous years. We had about 100 students who failed the HSGQE, that did not pass, and if you do not pass that successfully, you don't get a diploma. So when you do that calculation, you take the 100 students and you assume that that continues, you know, we don't have a way to, you know, to verify that that would continue. That's about a 2% portion of this. So even with that, we still have close to a five-point increase over last year in our attendance rate, or excuse me, in our graduation rate. So I think that that's.
And that's, excuse me.
Go ahead.
And that's four-year, not five?
This is four-year, yeah. This is four-year. These are kids that travel with a cohort, freshmen students who are supposed to, you know, in four years complete graduation. Five years is actually going to be different, and it's probably going to be less, and this is where it gets tricky in the calculation, because you have fewer students. Yeah. Where, you know, you don't have that percentage being, needing that support in their fifth year.
Superintendent, I've got 10 minutes left and two other items.
Okay.
So could you wrap this up?
Oh, wrap it up.
Sorry.
So you can see the attendance rate is another issue for many of our students, why they're not in school is something we're continuing to analyze. You can see as they get older, the rate drops off.
Well, they start to begin their life outside.
Need care for children.
Jobs or other things.
Yep, other influences. This was a poster that was created by a student in middle school, tells you your grades go down the drain. Really looking for the continued effort to emphasize attendance, and I think you all play a huge part in that just with your everyday conversations about what it means to have a productive member in our community, someone who, you know, has a strong ethic or responsible approach to showing up on time, everything else related to attendance. So we're, we're hoping to keep that focus going. So we're, we're hoping to keep that focus going. We know we saw a decline from last year and we think that more concentrated effort will have that boost back up. Last part, strengthening our services. We've got a number of new people that are now part of the Anchorage School District with some transition and really taking another perspective on how we do business, what we do and partnerships, obviously, that were mentioned today, as well as internal work that we're doing. Since I've been a superintendent, I think we've conducted three or four strategic support team reviews. And in those reviews, it's a painful process because things get shared that, you know, you would like to have addressed before they, they, they come out. But the reality of it is, is that we're committed to strengthening our services. We're not going to shy away from doing the hard work of continuous improvement and growing. So that's our framework for success and we're committed to continuous improvement and our theme this year is around growth. And so we hope to make sure that we're demonstrating growth in our students, growth in our staff and growth as a district, in the district as a whole in what we accomplish.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next item is Constitution Day. Who brought that forward?
I did, Mr. Chair, and you are generous enough to let me present on that. I'm Barbara Jones, the Anchorage Municipal Clerk, and I have three things to say about Constitution Day and a little bit of background. So I've worked with the Alaska Bar Association Law Related Education Committee and we've worked closely with the school district. In fact, Pam Orm, the School District Social Studies Curriculum Coordinator is a star. And so Pam worked with me on the, this presentation with the permission of the superintendent. And so the update is that all of the elementary schools are required to have some information about Constitution Day, which was yesterday, in the schools. And the principals confirmed that. And then the middle schools and high schools had some optional programs. So I'm going to tell you some, three things about that. One, at one of the middle schools, I thought one of the really cool things was a learning objective that students needed to learn that the Constitution was most, one of the most exceptional things about the United States and that students had a role in preserving our Constitution. So how did the activity go about proving that? And what happened is that it was the birthday party of the Constitution and the kids had to have a gift for the Constitution. And one of the gifts would be voting. And as the municipal clerk and my deputy clerk who run municipal elections, I thought that was really a cool gift. So that was one thing. The other thing was that there, the League of Women Voters and others were at schools, at Save was one location, and other schools to register students to vote. So of course, another great thing about Constitution Day, and the third thing that I've got, is one of my favorite things. I have a quiz for you on Constitution Day. And then, of course, typically you get the goodies after you take the quiz, but we'll let you have the goodies before or while you take the quiz. Anyway, it was just a fun little quiz that I found online about Constitution Day. And the pins are not U.S. Constitution pins, they are Anchorage pins, of course. But anyway, I just wanted to share this with you. I, I just have a great love of law-related education and the school district does a great job promoting this in our schools and involving citizens. And so thank you again, Mr. Chair, for letting me include this. And thanks to the school district for all the great stuff that they do on Constitution Day.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments on that item on the agenda? Yes, Tam?
Yes, a little challenge to everybody in the room. For Constitution Day, I challenged myself and went online and pulled up the citizenship tests that all new citizens are required to take, that my husband recalls taking many, many years ago when he became a U.S. citizen. And I took the test again. And it's a nice reminder, I, I have to say publicly, I did well on it. There were a couple few questions I misread and I had, I, I misanswered and I went back and reread the question and realized it. But it's a good time to refresh your own memory in terms of your knowledge of the Constitution and what makes our nation right. So I challenge you all to do so.
The mayor and I Wednesday went to a naturalization service at the Assembly Chambers. We had nine new citizens be, get sworn into this country and it's amazing to watch that process. And when you think about how far you're removed from it, for many of us, our grandparents came from another country. We're a nation of immigrants and we need to remember that because sometimes we tend to forget it. Next item on the agenda is item eight, free meals.
I just, I.
Jennifer?
And the reason that I brought it up last year was that our grandson's school was then one of the new schools that got free meals. And I started, started to see the list of other schools and I was kind of surprised at some of them. And so I'd asked, you know, is this revenue neutral? Are you, is the school district?
Ma'am, I didn't talk about, I'm the chief operating officer. In my regrets, I didn't anticipate this.
And I'm sorry, that was my fault.
I'm better prepared to address this. But just a couple of quick comments if I may. I'm relatively new and hadn't addressed that. We also have a new director of student nutrition, a guy named Jim Anderson, who's also retired from the office, who's the former director of logistics in the actual town of Alaska. I would tell you, firstly, I'm very excited about student nutrition. It's very optimistic, one, that it, we're going to make it the only entity here in the near term. And the CEP program that's a rep, we've got, we have 30 schools. It is a generating, revenue generating operation, some of the costs associated with it. But the other thing I'm excited about, I feel, is our vision to improve the experience for our students regards to the meals that we provide them. So ma'am, what I would offer to you, I think I first owe it to the, the school board to talk about our campaign, all things regards to student nutrition. And then what I would like to do is set up a time with you, and I'm happy to talk in detail, or even through the Assembly, on all things student nutrition and focus on any topics you'd like to talk about.
And, and just, I mean, and maybe you can do it in writing or whatever. I just, it was always my impression that, that the school meal program, it's federally funded and it's revenue neutral. And I just, I wanted to know if that's still the case or, or where we sit with that, just because, I mean, I, it's not that I am, I'm questioning the free meals, I just want to know where it sits and how we're doing with it.
And just to briefly address that, like I mentioned, it, it is a revenue generating program. Now, where, where there is a percentage of, of people who are eligible for the program who have not signed up for it, in those examples, we may be using some revenue because we're not getting reimbursed from the federal government. So it's, it's a little bit of, there are costs associated with running this program, but overall, it is, has the potential to be a revenue-raising operation.
And that's, that's, I, I'm not, there's another Assembly member who's not here today, but he became sort of obsessed with it when he first went on the Assembly and was following the food trucks and following logistics all around and just saw waste everywhere. And so I just, you know, I think it's something that, that we.
I'm pretty optimistic about.
And that's, that's great.
Jim Anderson is also very focused on how we move across the board.
And one more question before I forget, and we can meet afterwards, but I, the status of the Girdwood School and completion date, I think, well, that they can't get in.
Okay, we're running out of time rapidly. We're already there. Tam?
Yeah, we have member comments, quick piece.
Yes.
As Chair of the Board's Legislative and Communications Committee, I want to make sure that you're all aware of this opportunity, have leaders in the school. My board members have heard from me ad nauseam about this, but I want to make sure the Assembly members know about this opportunity to spend up to half a day in a school. And it'll be a personalized opportunity for you to visit a school, hopefully one you've never visited before. The principal, I'm, I'm scheduled to go to Henshaw Middle School and we, they have personalized my tour. I said specifically, I wanted to see a math class. I wanted to see how our new curriculum is actually being implemented. I said I wanted to see a middle school team planning time as we've discussed the, the funding of that piece. I want to see how the social emotional learning standards are implemented. So specific areas of my interest, they are tailoring the tour to those. And you can request that when you are assigned a school. But first thing you need to do is sign up. And the window for signing up is, is quickly going away. This is being organized on our level, on our city level by the School Business Partnership Program. And it's an expansion of something they've done for years where they've invited business leaders into the school. This is also now being offered to our elective leaders. So I urge you to choose a school you've, you've never been to before and make that request. If that one's already taken, to maybe go to your second or your third choice, but to, to spend some time and to pursue those specific issues that are of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Member comments? Ms. Higgins, anything?
Thanks, ma'am.
Comment?
Anything? Senator, anything? Ed, any comments?
Thank you. Great evening.
Kathleen? Tim?
Just, just thank you. It's very important. Thank you.
Yes, Amanda?
Just a quick comment. As you exit out the back of City Hall today, there is an event going on in the parking lot. It's annual Parking Day. It's a worldwide event to create parks in public spaces. So the municipality Parks Recreation Department has partnered and there's some food trucks out there and Humpeys Food, if you want to stop by on your way out. Thank you.
Ms. Gray Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Johnston? Bowski? No comments? Okay. Audience participation, there's anybody that really thinks they need to talk to us on any issue for a couple of minutes?
One, actually.
Not seeing any. Item nine, schedule of next meeting is December 11th. Hopefully we'll have report back on unification as far as we're talking about ASD MOA joint services because we'll be asking the question. I didn't send a motion to adjourn.
No, to adjourn.
Is there a second? We're adjourned.